I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, August 21st. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Here Baldwin.
Here.
Dean Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
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 And Councilmember Dean has asked for a medical accommodation to participate via Zoom today. So Councilmember Dean will be allowed to participate in discussions today. Okay, any agenda changes or deletions? All right, any guest speakers today? All right, moving on to public comment on agenda items only. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on agenda items only, please feel free to come to the podium.
William 1052 Elizabeth Street regarding agenda item 20% cap on R1. My comments are, and I have to leave after this, I have to go back to work. You're allowing ADUs and amateur hosts, also known as full-time residents, to obtain STR certificates in R1 zoning, yet you've made no provisions for tiny homes or inheritance rights. How does permitting these provisions along with 31-day rentals in R1 address the supposed issue of density in R1? Dear Councilmember Planning Commission Member Anderson, thank you for confirming the financial loss that R1 property owners will incur due to the proposed cap. Your statement at the August 15th Planning Commission Meeting where you mentioned that there are people who are going to get pinched clearly illustrates the financial harm this 20% cap will cause.
All sorts of things about this that are difficult. There are going to be people who are going to get.
However, there's also a hug with the 20% R1 cap, and it is the mayor who gets it. It's important to note that the R1 cap financially benefits the mayor, who has not yet recused herself from the issue. The mayor stands to gain from the appreciation of her multi-unit property outside of the R1 zone. As a certified appraiser, it is clear that the potential income streams from the mayor's property create more value compared to a similar property in R1 without STR property rights. Overall, this seems to be an unbridled animus towards property owners and the lifeblood of Sagatuck, our tourists. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Okay, anyone online, please feel free to raise your hand if you wish to speak on agenda items only. Okay, Eva, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, I also had a couple of questions and/or comments. Hello, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, and Eva, can you state your first and last name and where you live?
Of course. My name is Eva San Pedro Koontz. I live in Naples, Florida. I used to reside in Chicago for 16 years, and we have owned a vacation rental for about nine years in Sagatuck. It was initially purchased as a family home, and then we rented it. So I had a couple of questions and comments related to the same topic. One is, will reminders be sent by city to renew license as there have been now for those who have been grandfathered in? Also, just a reconsideration of when the property is sold, if the license can transfer specifically maybe for individuals that are non-arms-length transaction. Like if it's not an open market sale for the, for example, this house particularly for us is owned by a corporation, which I will inherit, and we hope to have it both as a vacation rental. And so in this case, it probably will be the corporation selling it to me that my parents own. So I didn't know if there would be like a difference in that type of sale versus like a sale that is not like that. And then I just wanted to know, what is the current vacation rental to total home stock or dwelling units percent or ratio? And that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Eva.
Thank you.
Anyone else online wish to speak on agenda items only? Okay, all right, then we will move on to discussion items for today. Item 6A, introduction of new staff.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order for Councilmember Dean to participate in the meeting with a medical request. I believe we had a situation like this previously, and I want just clarification on how that actually the process works.
Yeah, our attorney Chris is online who can talk about that. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. Councilperson Gardner, we actually did have this previously, so I appreciate the memory on that because I handled that one as well. If everybody remembers, actually during COVID and the pandemic, there were executive orders in place that allowed remote meetings, including membership of council members during that period of time. There was a legislative amendment that was made that allowed that. It essentially sunsetted, and in the process of its sunsetting, there were questions about how to still deal in the sort of post-pandemic world with individual council members who would be under potential limits of if it's COVID or a medical leave or otherwise military leave. And ultimately, the Attorney General in the state of Michigan has authored an opinion on that part, which is what we have used in the past with city council after those executive orders expired, where on an official request for and a medical accommodation, it is supported particularly through the American Disability Act and through the Attorney General's opinion to then allow an accommodation in this sort of limited circumstance, obviously not military leave, but for medical purposes, to allow both discussion deliberation and still participation. Otherwise, I think, as is kind of raised by Councilperson Gardner's question, the general practice, and this is, I think, the appropriate practice in the state, is we do still allow council persons who request remote attendance to be like any other public member and certainly provide public comment, but but for this limited area, they wouldn't otherwise be able to vote, discuss, or deliberate on a topic. So it's just a particular sort of legal nuance related to the request that was made.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I also, while I have you there, it is about participation of the council this later in the meeting. Just curious, Councilmember Logan, right next to me here, had an application in for a short-term rental, which made him have to recuse himself from the vote on 20% caps. Is he now able, now that the application process is over, is he now able to participate in conversations about short-term rentals?
Yes, so generally, our position from our office is no. I think what we find sort of with respect to the facts of the situation, typically the way the law reads, you look at the conflict of interest at the time that the action is being deliberated or discussed, and you determine whether or not withdraw is going to be necessary at that time. My understanding is that Councilperson, that Logan did basically abstain from the original deliberation and conversation with an application pending. Once that happens, what I think is particularly interesting about both the city charter and then those cases related to conflicts of interest is the extent to which they're, and granted, it's somewhat silent, there's no, there's no clear process or capability for allowing the potential remedy or resolution of a conflict during the discussion and deliberation of a project that allows them then to sort of come back in and begin deliberating again. So I think it's, I mean, ultimately, there is a process that I think council can vote on it, but really, city attorney also under the charter has some position in making a final determination of a conflict of interest here because of the silence in the charter and in common law and finding a strict process to sort of reopen or sort of bring that position back forward. The basis of his abstaining from the original position, I think, still sort of presents a problem for purposes of conflicts of interest.
If I may, the discussion then was around the recommendation, the request to the Planning Commission to form a draft, and it was then voted on. Would that constitute closure of that? And since we're talking about a new, you know, discussion and a new item, a new motion, would that be a separate item?
So my understanding of the general background, feel free to correct me, but if I, if in working on the original sort of piece of dealing with conflicts of interest, because I know, you know, it's been of particular importance to the community, so we have been directed to analyze it for all council persons. And if I, if I sort of remember the facts, the pieces I draw from is that originally you had informed, I think it was maybe us directly or through Ryan, that you would not be withdrawing your application before a specific workshop as it related to deliberation at the time on draft ordinances that would institute caps. And at that time, we did have a conversation that we were a little bit concerned about the capability of even just withdrawing that application to remove conflicts, but at least as it related to our concerns, then the deliberation at the council level hadn't fully sort of taken hold. And so I think you had a choice at that time, if I remember correctly, of deciding if you would withdraw that application. Ultimately, I think you proceeded to deliberate after the workshop and before the meeting, you then submitted a new application with respect to an STR license and then recused yourself from those discussions. So maybe you're just, I'm not sure if your distinction relates to the first time we had the conversation or the second, but ultimately, I think you ended up resubmitting an application, having that application processed as the deliberation on this piece sort of moved forward. So that's sort of my concern.
Yeah, I don't think that answers the question that I was asking. Was this a separate motion?
Well, I don't think the separate motion has anything to do with, so to answer that question directly, motion itself isn't a term that's used in the charter or the case law as it relates to the conflict of interest piece. It's a question related to the action or the policy that you're partaking in. So if to answer your question, I don't think that your charter makes that distinction. I don't think that the case law that we sent to the council makes that distinction.
So you can or can't participate?
No, I can't.
Yeah, I do think that that conflict of interest would still be in play, given that you essentially have abstained from that process early on due to the conflict. The only piece you sort of waited was for the application to finally close and are attempting to sort of reengage.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was what my withdrawal was predicated on, was that my pending application was what would force me to withdraw.
So Chris, just so I can get this straight, he put in his application, the application has been approved. Does this mean as long as he serves on council, he cannot preside over any short-term rental, whether it be an ordinance or anything else down the road? Or?
No, I think obviously that had, that conflict of interest needs to be assessed at the time that the issue is taking up. I mean, generally speaking, ordinances, I think this one's a particular sort of nuance, which we've, we've talked to Councilmember White about because of the caps and the particular districts with respect to the pending application. So I'll admit that the circumstances are a little bit nuanced factually as it relates to other comparable case law and how the charter treats it. So I wouldn't want to go and say that there's going to be a general prohibition because gen, because I would say generally, on an ordinance of applicability over districts, you're not going to have a specific conflict. This one is particularly as we sort of opine to the council, the only reason we flagged it is because of the cap issue and trying to get applications filed to the extent that a cap could cause an impact as it relates to that application. But for the, and most of you, which we've analyzed the situation for the rest of the council when asked, was in an ordinance of general applicability related to different land use districts, whether you own property in those districts or otherwise, we don't think that that creates a conflict of interest. I think it's just here interesting in that the, the draft amendment proposal itself particularly relates to caps in the district. So we're just, our concern just relates to public transparency and sort of the concerns about what it looks like to have that application be processed in relation to the caps that are then in the ordinance.
And the fact that he has his house, you're not in the R1 district, are you?
I'm in the R1.
You are in the R1, never mind.
Yeah, I thought he was in the district. I apologize if he's not. That was my understanding.
No, he is.
Yes.
Yeah, any other questions? Does that answer your question? Yeah, I know. It's tricky. It seems nuanced, doesn't it?
Yeah, and just to maybe just add this additional piece to, because I understand like Logan's question of like, you know, there, yes, there was a vote to kind of say, all right, you know, form these, these ordinances, but you know, the ordinances were draft, and then they were reviewed by the council, at least at your last workshop meeting. And at that time, the conflict still existed, at least for purposes of that meeting. So at least these drafts have been presented to you while the conflict existed. And then obviously Chris kind of provided his analysis on whether or not that's, that's changed at that point.
So if, okay, so these ordinances, we get past this, if something else comes up on STR, he can, he can talk again.
Yeah, I think particularly, and, and in large part, it's our recommendation, we're just because of the factual basis and the scope of the amendment being related to the R1 district and it having caps, right? So that's why, again, I don't think it's a general prohibition, because for instance, what if you put this in place and it's not uncommon that if you put an ordinance in place with whatever the council decides, you are going to determine that maybe there are pieces that you missed, pieces that you want to modify or you want to go back and look at a second time. It's often that once you apply an ordinance, you will determine, and who knows what, the next 12 months, you want to do something different. Your focus may be entirely different than on the R1 district and on the caps. And it also would be true that there's going to now have been some latency and some period of time between when, when Councilperson White obtained his application. So your next review could have nothing to do with the R1 district. It may have nothing to do with caps, or it could be an overall review of the ordinance. I don't think that it's, and the other piece of this is it's not always going to be an ordinance amendment. It could be Councilperson White, you could be asked to make questions about applications or other issues, which I don't, I can't tell you today whether it's generally going to implicate his interest in having an application or not. I mean, you have other council persons that have applica, have licenses as well. So certainly, we're not taking the position that they can't participate.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions on that? Okay, all right, we will.
Equitable.
Yeah, I understand. All right, we'll move on to item 6A, introduction of new staff. Ryan, if you want to take on that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce you to two new city staff members this afternoon. They have both been diving in and doing an absolute fantastic job of learning their roles and been asking great questions and asking about other opportunities to, to learn. So I'll invite up Nikki Bradewig and Luke Thompson to our podium here. We'll have them both come up. So Nikki Bradewig is our new city treasurer and finance officer, and as you know, from, from some of the prior materials I provided, she has over 31 years of accounting experience in the nonprofit world, private sector, the public sector, and Holland Township, and now here in the, the city of Sagatuck with us. She actually just today participated in some training with Plant Moran at kind of a rolling program that, that takes place each month to get up to speed even more on, on public finance-related matters. So maybe I'll turn over to Nikki to tell you a little bit about herself and see if you have any questions for her, and then we'll touch on Luke.
Yeah, so I went to school, Fair State University, and, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, great. And got out of school, we won't even talk about manpower. Yeah, right. And small job shop, but then I started with Habitat for Humanity, loved giving to my community, and I did that for 20 years, two different habitats, sometimes at the same time. And then I went and started working in Sagatuck with Spice and Tea Merchants, and I liked that too, loved doing that. But then I wanted, I, I always wanted to get into government, and that's when I went to Holland Charter Township, and then this came up here, and I really wanted to get back into Sagatuck because this place rocks. And you guys took me. So here I am. And I love people, and I love the people here. So that's me, and that's what I'm here.
Fantastic, Nikki. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, yeah. And so we also have Luke Thompson, who's the new director of planning and zoning. Luke comes to us from the city of South Haven, where he was their assistant zoning administrator, zoning administrator certificates from MSU Extension and in the AGIS certificate from MSU Extension, where Luke actually just yesterday, within like minutes, was able to create like an updated short-term rental map that kind of show us where our existing short-term rental certificates under the prior zoning ordinance are, are, and then where the new short-term rental licenses are so far. I haven't told him this yet, but he picked the wrong colors because they're University of Michigan colors, but that aside, that aside.
Logan's like, what?
Well, we'll forgive him on that, but it, it just goes to show, I mean, he, he already has a lot of different mapping software on, on his systems and has some great skills. But again, like Nikki has been asking just fantastic questions, diving right in, reading all kinds of ordinances, and then he's already been diving in and answering calls and having meetings and inspecting properties, and they both have been doing a fantastic job. So Luke, you want to kind of tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, the, the colors were pre-generated, not me, I promise. Yeah, I, I'm from South Haven, so yeah, I've been, there's a lot of similarities between South Haven and Sagatuck. Obviously, they both rely on tourism. They both have short-term rental ordinances. And yeah, I've been having fun the past couple days diving in. So there's, there's definitely a lot, but it's, yeah, it's great so far.
Your, your accent suggests you are not originally.
Oh, no, sorry, I'm not from South Haven. No, I'm three and a half thousand miles east is, yeah, I'm from the UK.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah. But, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So they're both going to stay and just kind of see what their first City of Sagatuck council meeting is about. So they're, they're happy to be here and happy to have them, so.
Fantastic. Thanks, you guys. All right, we will move on to item 6B, the review of the updated AT&amp;T plans. It's on page two of your packet.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so we have some folks from the AT&amp;Team here with us this afternoon for your, your workshop meeting. I am sure all of you recall, you know, last year, there was a lot of planning and work being done to bring cellular antenna to the Mount Baldhead Ray Dome. Got to the point of an agreement being drafted and going back and forth and some, some language that was agreed upon and ultimately approved by you as, as a city council. And at this point, that agreement has not been signed by AT&amp;T. They're still trying to work through the, the necessary approvals to, to move the project forward. So at this point, they're, they're still working on obtaining approvals through the State Historic Preservation Office. So the Mount Baldhead area is a part of the Kalamazoo Rivermouth Traditional Cultural Property, and that property, you know, as a whole, with the river mouth is eligible to be on the National Register of Historic Places. And because this is a, a project that needs FCC approval, they're also required to obtain these State Historic Preservation Office approvals, which involves consultation from local tribes to, who are essentially the experts on this area and, and cultural property to kind of determine whether or not there's, could potentially be any adverse impacts from the work that, that's proposed. So the consulting party tribes and SHPO have identified some initial concerns that could have an adverse impact and kind of submitted a number of questions to AT&amp;T to, to work through. So they've been working on that for several months now. One of the concerns that has been raised is, is, you know, the amount of, you know, ground disturbance in this area. And so to kind of help alleviate some of that concern, AT&amp;T's evaluated not boring underneath the Mount Baldhead stairs and instead installing conduit underneath the steps so that they don't have to do as much digging and have as much ground disturbance to, and hopefully alleviate a portion of that concern that SHPO and the consulting party tribes have. So we've had these plans reviewed by John Moxey, the city engineer, who was on the call today, and then Scott Herbert's taken a look at them. I've taken a look at them. But I wanted to make sure and bring this before you as a council to take a look at before AT&amp;T ultimately submits these updated plans with their responses to a number of other questions that SHPO has as well.
Okay. Did you want AT&amp;T to speak or give any kind of update?
I see Dave's got his camera on. I know Dave's kind of been one of their, their leads just to kind of talk. They maybe want to touch, I mean, AT&amp;T's been very, you know, committed to this project. I mean, obviously, you guys have a lot of time investment here. Anything that you want to add?
Yeah, so just, it's, first of all, it's a quick introduction. My name's Dave Behan. I'm the Associate Director of Network Engineering for the project. And it's, it's pretty much what Ryan just said. While we've had a lot of questions from SHPO that we need to answer, I categorize them into two situations. Why there and what can you do to minimize the ground disturbances? We have the engineering answers to why there. We've worked that all through. Our consultants believe that if we can attach to the stairs as was provided, that eliminates a lot of the digging, not all of it, but that'll go a long way to showing, I guess, a way of rectifying their concerns. And we have the drawings here. Once we have, you know, the approval, we're ready to put our package together and resubmit to SHPO for their review in consultation with the tribes. We are hopeful this is a good solution that we can resolve and get approval on quickly, and we believe this solution will get us there. Of course, that's their final determination. And Ryan, you know where the drawings are, so on the steps.
Okay, obviously, this is just an update, but anyone have anything that they want to ask while he's on the line?
Oh, yeah, Mayor Stanton, thank you. And good to see the AT&amp;T folks. It's been a while since we've talked. They were in several meetings, and my concern at this point is, given the complexity and sensitivity around the site, I wonder if there's an opportunity to maybe look at this differently in terms of a solution to allow additional co-location for other service providers in the community. We have a, we still have a need at the beach to have better cell signal, and this is presumably going to be one solution. But I, I really think we're at the point now, given the age of this, as well as some of the sensitivities and the complexities that are endemic to this site, the city council should begin looking at some other solutions which would be allowing AT&amp;T to get cellular service to the community, but also allow other carriers to co-locate. I plan to bring more information to this council at our next, next workshop on some alternatives. I think at this point, it really, the, I think we have to be talking about some other solutions which will maybe move away from this as a particular use, but also continue to provide the wireless communications that people are asking for. I am, I am of a firm opinion that less is more at Mount Baldhead. The less that we disturb the site, whether it's adding the conduit under the stairs, whether it's drilling or not, not drilling, maybe that's not the quite right word, but they're planning on putting a diesel generator up there, which they have to actually put pylons, I think they're called, into the dune. There's a lot of sensitivity up there, and I'm of the opinion less is more, and we have alternatives that we can be looking at to meet this need.
Do you want to address the generator portion of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So on the generator situation, we can look at your specific concerns and adjust accordingly. If it, we're, it's always the awkward situation though, because if you don't have a generator there and you lose power, then you have no service.
Yep, understood.
Now, if there are specific, I believe there were, were drawing digging questions that we received from the SHPO response, which we have addressed. And again, that should be part of our packaged response. If there are other concerns, though, I'd be happy to address them.
Do you want to follow up with any of that, Russ, before I go to Scott?
No concerns about the actual engineering behind it. It's, this is all pretty straightforward. My concern is more, not concern necessarily, but I think there's a different solution to this problem of better communication for the community that we, as a council, should be looking at at this point, given the sensitivity and the complexity that this project has presented to AT&amp;T. There's no guarantee that the State Historic Preservation Office is going to say yes. At this point, there's, you know, confidence maybe, but there's no assurance. And even if that is not provided, then we're still going to be back to where we are today with a lack of wireless service in the community. And there are other options to, available to the city at this point that I believe we should be talking about.
May I, may I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if you're looking at a different, so when you look at the solution, sir, if you're looking at a different structure to support antennas, I, I respect what you're saying, and I understand that. We do believe we have a path forward with SHPO. If we don't, we have an ability to take this through the mitigation process. While that will take longer, we do believe we, we can be successful in that area. We've done, we've had other mitigation situations where we resolved this, again, through the FCC mitigation process.
Scott, I saw you had your hand raised earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I can't be with you today. I remain committed to the AT&amp;T project, and it has my full support. I would be hesitant to get into the marketing of a monopole cellular tower anywhere in the dunes. Our ordinances prohibit cellular
Our ordinances prohibit, um, cellular towers. And some of AT&amp;T's competitors have already taken up their own solutions in Sagatuck. Verizon has their small sec, uh, cell technology already in place. Uh, so I think, well, what they have brought to us today is a very sensitive and, uh, effective way to minimize dis, uh, disturbances and, um, I am a hundred percent committed to, uh, the AT&amp;T project. I think it's a great project. It would bring the first net technology, uh, to our beach, to that area of Lake Michigan, which sorely needs more coverage for our first responder community. So, um, it's a public safety issue and it's a frankly, an important piece of infrastructure that I think we need. So I remain a hundred percent committed to the AT&amp;T project.
I concur with member Dean.
Um, I'm looking at the plans here and I'm seeing these lines that are, uh, being brought underneath the steps. Would that mean that we would have, uh, have to rebuild the steps, uh, uh, at this point? Um, or is this something that you're planning on going under the steps and, and digging through? Or is the plan to redo the steps at that, at that time?
At this point, we are looking to just attach to the existing stairs. At this point, we have worked with, uh, Ryan. We are aware that there's a possibility for future replacement of those steps, maybe nothing firm, and we would be committed to it, to working with you when that time comes. But for today, just an attachment to the existing stairs.
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking, we've been talking, I think those have been, those were done in two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven? So it's been about over ten, go close to fifteen years since they were last done. I know it's coming soon to have them done. It'd be nice to get all that done at one time rather than wait and then have to go back there and dig through all that. That seemed like it would be complicated after what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I don't, uh, totally disagree. It would be nice to have it all done at once. I think, you know, funding's a, a piece of that, that equation. Um, you know, and I think, you know, I, John Moxie thought, thinks that maybe they have a little bit of a longer lifespan than what, uh, I maybe initially heard. So I think that that's kind of in question as well, it, um, about how much longer, John Moxie, how, how much longer do you think the steps have?
Yeah, steps, I think they back to two thousand seven-ish. Um, so, yeah, uh, ten to fifteen years is probably what we would expect to get out of them. And, and they've, they've gotten there, but, uh, they're, they're in rough shape. Um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little hard to say how much life do they have left? Because it's, it's the bits and pieces. Some of it has already failed and the DPW has replaced components. The main posts, uh, look like the, uh, short of a little bit of rot on the top, they, they're, they're sound. Um, stringers have been replaced here and there. So, yeah, but some of it has already failed and been replaced. Some of it still has, you know, plenty of life left. The rest is in between.
So, yeah, if we could ask, um, AT&amp;T, if we have conduit underneath the stairs, is that an easy enough thing to take the conduit down? And if there's a stair replacement, being able to just reattach that?
That's not a problem whatsoever.
Okay.
We work with, um, landlords in situations like that all the time. Um, best example off the top is, uh, on a rooftop, um, if, if the landlord needs to re-roof their roof, we work with our contractors.
I would, I would just add that, uh, yeah, I would, I would agree with that. The, the way they're being supported, um, it, it should be fairly straightforward to provide some temporary support, uh, during any work on the steps.
All right, any, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam, I just want to, uh, comment that I remain supportive of the concept of providing improved wireless communications to our community. My concern is, is that we have not vetted other solutions that might also service other carriers in the community who have interest in providing better service. I'm a T-Mobile customer. For instance, the AT&amp;T and the Verizon do not help me. And there's other carriers that would also, I think, be interested in having the opportunity to provide better services for their customers. And I just, all I'm saying is that this is nothing against AT&amp;T as a company. It's what's best for the community in terms of our, our, our constituents, our visitors, our businesses. How could we better provide the services needed in a way that would not disturb Mount Bald Head?
Anyone else? Okay.
So, yeah, so at this point that I think we'll, you know, maybe he's good to at least submit this set of plans back to SHPO and, um, if the council wants to have a further discussion about doing something further with, with, uh, or different, um, you know, staff takes our direction from you as a council, if that's what you'd like to do. Um, uh, we'll also work with AT&amp;T to maybe, you know, update some agreement language, you know, if we're going to be attaching to the steps and have a future replacement need. So we have something that would cover that scenario. So.
Okay. All right, Dave, thanks for being online with us today. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, folks. And Ryan, um, we'll have that, that response over to SHPO for your review before it's officially submitted.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thanks, Dave.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item, uh, discussion item number six C, the 2024 Road Resurfacing Recommendation Award. It's on page thirty-two. And Scott?
Hi, good evening. Um, you've heard about this a couple of times now. Once, uh, at the annual capital improvements discussion that we've had and then, uh, another, uh, not a short while ago, gosh, summer went fast. Um, you were presented with a, a proposal from Flees and Vannenbrink to, uh, do design and bidding for some road resurface work. Uh, it's these five locations listed here on the cover letter and then also in the, um, recommendation of award on the next page from Flees and Vannenbrink. So, um, we're, we're really just looking to get this one across the finish line at this point. So with your approval, uh, we would, on Monday, we would like to, um, get the contract signed and, and get these roads resurfaced. Um, this is a budgeted item. Uh, it's not really much of a surprise. And then I, I'm particularly excited about this because I really believe that in combination with this work here, in combination with the Maple Street, uh, work next year, I think this is going to take such a huge bite out of a lot of the ugly roads that we have out there. There's still more to do. Um, but I think this is a really awesome amount of work that we have before us. So, um, happy to answer any questions. The award, um, the recommendation of award would be to Michigan, uh, paving and materials company and the amount of a hundred and forty, uh, where'd it go? A hundred and forty-eight thousand, one seventy-six and twenty cents, and then a little bit of money left over for, um, some engineering work, administrative work, contingencies, and then also, um, re-striping some of the roads, painting, that sort of thing. So.
Scott, while we have you, um, I, I think a lot of people don't understand the concept of, you know, just the resurfing as, resurfacing aspect of some of these roads and why we choose to resurface some as opposed to the whole, you know, digging up and doing a full, um, road repair, um, and why these were chosen.
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can touch base on that a little bit. Uh, a lot of the roads that are selected, actually all of them, these are roads where the underground utilities are in fairly decent shape. We expect some life left in each of them. We're not, you know, we're not going to pave over bad utilities only to tear it up a short while later. Um, so, um, these are really roads targeted for just surface treatments. So there's not a lot of other major underlying road issues.
Good.
So, uh, the process really is, is pretty straightforward. You know, the, the top coat of asphalt, about an inch and a half down will get milled completely off versus just patching potholes, um, and then repaved, um, with HMA asphalt, um, with the actual proper equipment. Um, so that will, um, you know, and then if there are areas where some of the base layer is compromised or anything like that, then obviously that'll get addressed when the pavement gets removed. So.
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I do. Thanks for your standing. Um, hello, John and hi, Scott. Um, Elizabeth Street, now the construction's done at the high school. That's not just a resurfacing project, right?
Correct.
That's when you get a lot of calls on.
Right.
So.
Yep, we, we do. Uh, so keep in mind, you know, Maple Street's going to be a pretty sizable project in terms of dollars and logistics and it, it's a huge project with the water main replacement. So to make it a little more, um, palatable, I, I think we still have Elizabeth Street very high on our radar. And then we also have certain sections of Park Street high on the radar too. So, but for right now, this is definitely, uh, a good amount of work.
Okay. So our new hot box will actually help us continue to stay on top of Elizabeth, especially if school starts next week and the construction traffic, I think, is mostly done, right?
Yeah, I, I talked to Tim Travis from the school, uh, I think, what was it, a week or two ago? Uh, they still have some, some construction taking place. So.
I think there's another phase they're still working on.
There is. So, um, twenty twenty-five, by the end of twenty twenty-five, I th, don't quote me on this, but I think what he was saying was, uh, by the end of twenty twenty-five, uh, most of their construction would be done. At least the heavy, uh, construction vehicles would stop pulverizing Elizabeth Street up there. So, you know, really, as far as the capital improvements plan, if we aligned Elizabeth Street shortly after that, it would be perfect timing.
Thank you.
I have kind of an unrelated question about the hot box. Um, Douglas doesn't have a hot box, do they?
They do.
Oh, they do have one.
Yeah, they have a small one. It's more geared towards cold patch.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was opportunity to rent it out to them. That's, that's all.
Yeah, ours definitely has more capacity, but, yeah, we, we work pretty closely.
So they do have a hot box. I didn't know that. Smaller one. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott. All right, um, moving on to items six, uh, D, TMF Water Service Material Verification Agreement. It's on page thirty-six.
Right? Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you're aware, our, our final distribution systems material inventory is, is due to Eagle, uh, the Michigan Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, uh, in October. And, and so we were, uh, uh, successful in obtaining a, uh, a grant, uh, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to help us with the, uh, uh, you know, the necessary work to, to do this, uh, final inventory. Uh, so the grant covers, uh, the engineering work, uh, as well as, uh, the contractor to do the lead service line verifications. Um, this, this includes some actual, uh, kind of potholing, uh, into, uh, the right-of-way, uh, to get down to the, the materials to verify them. Uh, so, uh, Flees and Vannenbrink, uh, 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 received bids, uh, received four bids. Um, all of them were well above, uh, what we're hoping they would be. Uh, but, but Flees and Vannenbrink kind of, uh, worked out the contract with, uh, the low bidder, Compton Inc., to, um, uh, match the, the budget that we had from the grant dollars from Eagle, uh, and what they're willing to reimburse, uh, and still get the number of required lead service line verifications done. So we can still do this within budget and still hit the, the state requirement. So, uh, we're recommending that, uh, on Monday that you, uh, award, uh, the contract to Compton Inc. on the amount of a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars and all.
Great. Uh, any questions or discussion?
Uh, just a quick question. Thank you, Mayor Stanton. The, um, so, thank you, please, for, um, getting us within the, um, grant award amount. So I think that's very important. We, we want this to be budget neutral for our citizens and, um, to be able to get the work done and get the information into the state, uh, by the sixteenth. So I just really appreciate the effort to be sensitive to the financial side of this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We will move on then to the last item, uh, discussion item six E, review of short-term rental licensing ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance amendment and policy for available short-term rental licenses. It's on page forty-six of your packet. All right, Ryan.
Just a quick update for you, Mayor. I know you're quite familiar with the process and, and how we arrived here, so I, I won't necessarily, uh, repeat that today. Uh, at your last workshop meeting, we had the, uh, the draft, uh, uh, police powers or regulatory, uh, ordinance, uh, before you as it related to, uh, the cap as well as the, uh, the draft, uh, essentially lottery policy and how the lottery would work, uh, if a cap was implemented. Uh, since your workshop meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing, uh, at their, uh, regular meeting, uh, last week, uh, and took a number of comments and then deliberated on the, the zoning text, uh, uh, as it relates to implementing a cap. Um, they ultimately made a, uh, a forward-to recommendation to adopt that, that language, um, that's before you. So, for you is the police powers language, is the zoning amendment language, and then, uh, the policy. Um, and assuming you want to move forward with implementing, uh, a cap, uh, through, with the lottery system and consistent with your, your, your previous motion that you passed, um, this language would accomplish that. Uh, as a reminder, just a couple of changes from your original motion and what you wanted us to draft. Uh, one is that, uh, accessory dwelling units would be exempt from the caps. So that, uh, you know, uh, property owner who owner occupies the home and they obtain special land use approval, they could then obtain a short-term rental certificate for just the ADU and rent it separately. Or a property owner that has a, a short-term rental certificate or license, uh, that either, uh, constructs an ADU or has an ADU and wants to also obtain a, uh, a license for that ADU, uh, could do so, uh, knowing that they could still only, you know, rent out the entire property under a single contract. So that's one change. Um, the exemption of, uh, five sixty Campbell is not included as we've reviewed a prior consent judgment, uh, that was entered with the court that we believe would already allow the property to be exempt from, uh, the maximum limits. Uh, and then just one other item of note here, um, your original motion, uh, wanted, uh, the option to be able to adjust the cap limits by resolution. Um, and our attorneys have reviewed that and that's a, you know, a lawful thing to, to have in your, your, your ordinance. Uh, but you do have another option. If you, if you aren't interested in doing it via resolution, you certainly can, you know, not have that provision in there and, and simply go through the formal ord, ordinance amendment process like you can for any other ordinance if you're going to make an amendment.
Um, could we explain that portion of it, um, the resolution versus having it as an ordinance and why one would be preferred over the other? Um, I don't know if our attorneys want to address that part, if Chris wants to address that as to why.
Happy to do that, Mayor. I think, um, at the sort of baseline, the way that the ordinance is prepared, you are getting actual limits set in this first ordinance by numbers. So certainly we're not talking about the resolution process at the threshold. It's really a question of when you're making changes. And the, um, authority on this, which we've researched in a couple of different frameworks, not just for STRs, but also this typically comes up as well in the marijuana licensing context where you set initial license numbers by class or type of license and then allow adjustments to be more, um, reflective and sort of more responsive to what might be adjusting changes of policy as the city implements this. The, the sort of benefit of the resolution is that it can be done without the ordinance process required, particularly public hearing and sub, sub, subsequent multiple meetings for which maybe particularly when you adjust caps up is going to be non, um, focused on possibly by the community. It might not cause as much concern. So in that type of situation, you would just have a more streamlined approach and be able to make those adjustments. Um, it's also written currently in your ordinance as permissive, so it's certainly not meant to be an obligation of the only way you could ever adjust caps, even if you took the draft as proposed. You could always go back and make amendments by ordinance, because ultimately, um, under another doctrine, the equal dignity doctrine, you'd be entitled to always go back as a council, making a legislative policy adjustment by an ordinance amendment. So it sort of adds, the reason it's in there, it adds flexibility in a situation where it seems appropriate to counsel to do so, and you have set it already in your ordinance as a proper sort of delegated tool to make those adjustments. Um, certainly you don't have to do it that way. And as the, uh, city manager noted, you would just always go back through the ordinance process. You have the cap set in two different sets of ordinances. So obviously, you know, if you decided to make adjustments, you could just parallel those in your police power ordinance and in the zoning amendment at the same time. And they require different changes. There's not any basis in doing so to circumvent any, any sort of typical adoption process, because all of those processes have already been accomplished at this time. Uh, it's more so just flexibility in the future, depending on what the policy changes are. But certainly as, uh, council, I mean, we defer to ca, to council, uh, city council, if you determine that you would like a public hearing process, multiple meetings to adopt ordinance changes at each time, then, uh, you could certainly forego the resolution process. And again, the current draft as presented allows you that. There's no obligation to make licensing adjustments through only a resolution process. It's just set there as a permissive opportunity. So.
Madam Mayor, I, I would advocate that we go through the ordinance process. I think that any changes that get made to this should require public hearings and meetings. I mean, it's taken us two years to get to this point now. Um, any changes that should be made by our council or future councils, I think it just makes sense to take that through the public hearing process, through multiple meetings and make sure that, again, everybody has a chance to be heard in this, and to state their views. I think it's served us well on this and I think that we should continue with that via putting this through as an ordinance.
Holly?
Yeah, I, I agree. It's such an important issue in the community and regardless of where people are on it, I think they would want, uh, if somebody was making a change as a future council or to make a change in, in the opposite direction of their beliefs, they would expect and I think would deserve an, a hearing of that. If it were just, I, I would be okay if, if, uh, any tweaks were just to keep it at twenty percent. So, you know, um, seven more houses are built. That would mean, you know, you'd get X many more licenses. I'm fine to, for councils to true up to keep it at twenty percent without public hearings. Um, and that might have to happen from time to time, but to really make a fundamental change, I just, I think that it's a better process.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Uh, yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions on the, I did attend the planning commission, which I think most of the council attended on Thursday evening. Couple of questions on some of the recommendations. One is that, to make sure I understand the scenario, so for any property that has an ADU, they're not going to be subject to the cap. Let's, but just a scenario that I've been asked is if a ADU is rented as a short term rental and then they let the certificate lapse. When they go back to reapply, that's going to be open to them. There's not going to be any restrictions to the app to reapplying for another short term certificate. Is that correct?
So I just want to clarify, it's not that any property that has an ADU would be exempt.
As long as they've gone through the special land use permitting process and they've gotten that clearance from the planning commission, which I understand is in perpetuity.
Correct. So if you, yeah, so if you if you went through the, if you if your owner occupying your your home and you have special land use approval and assuming that that use was never abandoned, then then yes, you know, the the next owner could apply and and not be subject to the cap as it relates to the accessory dwelling unit.
So the scenario that I'm thinking of is if you have a home that's, and I've had several people, and as a matter of fact, we had a couple of letters that were written about this to us. I appreciate that this has been put in because I think it does address a concern that a number of people have had. Is that if you have an ADU and it's been special land used approved and you are short term renting it, and then you decide I want to rent it long term, or perhaps I don't want to rent it for a couple of years. Then you go back to that scenario and you want to rerent it and apply for a short term certificate. Unless the law has changed, you're going to be eligible to go back. You're not going to have to go through any, there's there's no restrictions. You just go back and.
That's the way I understand it.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, because your your approval, the special land use approval, this gives you the ability to separately rent the ADU from the the single family dwelling, whether that's long term or short term.
Those family circumstances change, you're going to be able to have that option still available to you if you choose to use it, if you let it, if you let it go, in other words.
I I think there could be an interesting question if that if that property owner isn't actually separately renting that ADU and at what point did they maybe abandon the ability, you know, that use?
Yeah, well, abandon is not quite the right word. They just, they have maybe have a change of family circumstance and decide they don't want to use it for that purpose for a period of time.
Right. Well, the reason why I use the word abandoned because that's the terminology that's in our ordinance as it relates to other, you know, a use at some point goes away. So I don't know, Chris, do you have some further thoughts on that?
Well, yeah. Your question is clear. So is the scenario. I think there's two different pieces. As I read the license cap piece, they're going to be excluded from the cap. The issue becomes whether they can still get some approval to be allowed to be an accessory dwelling unit. And I think what the manager is pointing out is if they're doing it under a special use permit for which they cease to continue to have the intent to use. So you have specific language in your zoning ordinance where if you have a current special use permit that runs with the land. If there has been what would be sort of the legal term of an event of abandonment, you no longer have the right to that special land use. And if you can't apply for one again, then there is a scenario where you have a problem. And it's not really going to be the license cap. It's going to be the situation because they're excluded from the cap. So it's going to be the question of whether they can go back and get the appropriate zoning approval to do that again. I don't know, you know, the tough part, and I think this is what the manager maybe is getting at, is factually speaking, whether it's six months or twelve months, there's always specific language in the ordinance, but it's also very factual. So it's one of the issues with respect to nonconforming uses and abandonment of that license. It's going to be a little bit of a factual scenario for each one of those individuals experiencing that ADU situation.
So could I have, ask a follow up question on that? If someone sells their home and they have an accessory dwelling unit, are they automatically approved to continue having that accessory dwelling unit? Or do they have to come back in front of a board, the planning commission, and ask for special land use for that again?
So if they have a a special land use to separately rent the accessory dwelling unit, that would transfer to the new owner, assuming the new owner is owner occupying that that home. The license itself for the accessory dwelling unit to short term rent it would not transfer and that new owner would have to apply for their own license.
But would not be subject to the cap.
But it would not.
Would not be subject to the cap as so long as you exempt the ADU.
Bullet point two, the cap will not operate retroactively and existing short term rental licenses will remain valid unless there's a transfer of property or the licenses revoked or lapses. The licenses revoked or lapses makes sense. The transfer of property is, I've had at least a half a dozen people contact me with that have generational homes that, you know, have been owned by a family since the early twenties. You know, my home's an example. My family's owned my home since the mid-fifties, best we can tell. Some of the records are not quite clear back then. But anyway, long story short is if a property is transferred, what is going to be the, what is going to be the the process by which if a you know, couple sells the home to their daughter, son, or whatever, and they have a short term rental, they'll be subject to the cap with that transfer of property is the way it's currently written. And I I I think we need to rethink that process because there are a number of examples of people in this community. And I put myself in that camp that have been able to transfer and want to keep their property in their family, but also want to remain to retain the option to be able to, you know, financially make it work for them. I've had two people, and one of them was at the planning commission meeting, said, look, if I can't do this, I'm going to sell my property. And I've had another person who's owned their home since nineteen twenty-seven in the community who said if this goes through and they and they transfer their property to their daughter, for instance, they're going to have to sell it. That's not, that's not good for this community.
I I think that goes back to your question, you know, and and that is, so what are we trying to accomplish here? And from what from some people I hear, well, we want to keep that sense of community. Well, keeping our sense of community has meant keeping generations in these houses. And these houses have been able to stay that way because of rentals. In fact, I remember a gentleman on Park Street who inherited a house from his grandfather and they poured a bunch of money into it, probably every penny he had with determination for it to become rental. He had come up, he'd come at one of our meetings at the beginning of this because he was concerned. But I'm seeing that often myself as well. When I think about short term rentals here in 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 Sagatuck, in the R one district, and the folks that the property owners that I know, they're they're folks that they're individual owners. They're not corporate conglomerates. You know, we don't have corporates coming into town, buying houses at a big, you know, at 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 any kind of a rate. But most of these houses in the R one district are individually owned by folks that eventually want to move here. There might be a few houses here or there that are investment houses, but the houses that I've gotten to know the owners of and through working at Mill Pond Realty in the past and living here are generational houses. And and I think that I think that that is worth consideration, having a inheritance clause or something to that effect to remain. I know, again, I've already met folks that had they not been able to rent their houses, they wouldn't have been able to keep their places in the family. So I guess we're going back to, you know, what are we trying to accomplish here with these ordinances? You know, are we are we trying to keep that sense of community that I've heard? Well, if so, then shouldn't we let the families keep their houses here that have been here for generations?
Chris, you're still online. What are your thoughts on an inheritance clause?
Yeah, so transfers you currently have, I think, in ninety-nine sixty-three, so it's not in the packet. It's in the previous portions. You do have transfers prohibited and you do have four subsections where you define them. We do have communities that once the conversation starts about caps, they do look at transfer language. So it's all a policy decision for council. And generally speaking, I will say that the language does get a little complicated because I think you heard the public comment early on, and it is a true one where you end up, we often sort of think in these situations as individuals, but it's not always an individual, could be a trust with beneficiaries, could be an LLC or incorporation. And then you end up with actually shares being transferred and and those shares could end up really being transferred to what otherwise might be considered essentially a related individual. Like if if you think of it in the simple sense of a parents transferring to kids, that still may be going on, but it's actually done in a corporate form with parents owning the LLC transferring shares. So yes, it can be prepared for a review by council. The actual provisions themselves, you know, they take a little bit of time to put together because we got to be a little careful because of all the different permutations of how someone can own a dwelling unit and exactly how those transfer scenarios can arise. And it does run us into always sort of a little bit of difficulty in the language and just making sure that we're sort of still accomplishing the council's goals and making sure you know, it's not just sales of shares from one member managed LLC to another that doesn't accomplish what the related situation is that's being raised by councilperson Muncie. So it can be done. We've had communities look at it. I think currently the way your ordinance is is prepared, you would need to go back and review the language. You'd you'd need sort of some additional sections provided to you for review to make further amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. And and you know, even though I don't support the concept of caps, I do support having a strong piece of ordinance, a strong ordinance that's not going to subject us to lawsuits and is going to make it clear, more importantly, is going to make it clear to those that are interested in short term renting renting their property, that they understand how the program works. And that there's every question or scenario we can imagine is answered, and this one is particularly, I don't think, has been answered yet, and it's not clear.
It's clear. There's no transfer property.
I'd I'd go to bullet point number four. Once available, the new short term rental licenses will be issued by a lottery system. That is something else that I think we need to think about because, not that I'm opposed to a lottery system, but I think a random lottery system, I think, is would be inherently unfair, especially if you've got a home that's been here or a family that's owned a home for an extended period. You know, I'm all about fair play, but I think this is a situation where we would want to have a different process to award a short term rental licenses that became available to those that may have been waiting.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment?
I agree. I, you know, I I think most of us were either at the meeting or watching via Zoom the planning commission meeting, but that subject was brought up too, which you just brought up, Russ, is the lottery system. And and if there could be some way that, you know, a resident or a long term resident could be pushed up somehow, you know, maybe a criteria might be helpful, would be better helpful because, you know, you've got somebody who has a house, has been here, you know, they're waiting five years, ten years until we get down to that twenty percent. And they've been waiting, they've been waiting, they want to hold on to their property. And and then somebody who just moves in from, you know, from any any city close by buys a house as a as an investment opportunity, you know, that gives them the opportunity to scoop that up. Again, what are we trying to accomplish here? If we're trying to accomplish a sense of community, then then it would seem that we would want to favor an inheritance tax and we would want to look and review the system of 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 gaining new new rentals, you know. So, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see those things worked on in this ordinance before I could approve it.
And Chris, what were, what was your opinion on doing it with a lottery system as opposed to having some sort of a criteria, a list of? I I just, I know we looked at it in a way to do it in the most legal way possible. What's your opinion on the lottery system versus some sort of criteria?
Yes, so before I get to that, just one thing about the current proposed one in the caps. I think, you know, transferability is always going on in the market, so I'm not saying that that's something that can be you know, that can be easily amended and added on because, of course, the zoning ordinance already addresses transferability in its general framework. So just to be clear about the current ordinance provisions you have addressed, I don't think transferability itself, if that's something you want to go down the road of looking at, can't be done separately in that section that's already in your current adapted license. Then as to this lottery situation, because of the caps that you're currently setting, I do think it's something that you'll have some time to play out to decide how you want to do it. So again, it's not going to cause a defect in the current amendment you have proposed. It's something that would certainly allow council, given the time that you've worked on this, to to move it forward. The reason that particularly municipalities get worried about setting standards and criteria for license selection is kind of two pieces that I see pretty often. One of them just addressed about four weeks ago, maybe by the Michigan Supreme Court, which is when you have applications that require criteria, there's an administrative and otherwise a council obligation to review and decide exactly how you're going to apply that criteria, score it, judge it, provide input, and then select applicants from some pool, correct? So for instance, in the case that came out of Supreme Court, not a short term rental case, okay, but still a scoring in a criteria case, sixty-five applications. To process those sixty-five applications with the material that was in there, they had to get them ranked to fifteen. And they decided to use a review committee because I think what particularly municipalities find is taking that kind of data, doing that review and then processing at the governing body level can be difficult. So that's one of the downsides of criteria and standards is that there's just an additional component, either administratively or for council, to work through what could be three available slots for seventy or a hundred licenses, right? And then you have to process, apply these standards. When you do that process, you end up with the risk of creating individuals perceived errors and that creates lawsuits. So there there is a risk in that sense that as you as you don't select certain people out of that pool, they may become concerned with the way that the the criteria was applied. They may have a position as it relates to a terminology or data that they submitted that they don't think someone else submitted. So you do, so you have to just be careful with that process because it creates risk in that sense. The other risk that I think gets created is exactly how council does review all of that material and remains consistent with its obligations under the OMA. And so if you do a staff review, that's obviously placing that extra burden on staff to accomplish in applying the any standards or criteria that council were to set. They have to then make recommendations or decide exactly how council would take those issues up. If you make committees, then those committees are going to be probably subject to the Open Meetings Act. You're creating additional layers, meetings, and a lot of complexity. So that's the one thing. The other piece is applying a criteria and deciding if you're going to do scoring of points. The problem that typically arises with scoring of points when you're offering a license, which some people are going to perceive as a property interest, even if it's a brand new license, we're not talking about renewals, of course. It's not what my comment is intended towards, but even for new licenses on scoring, let's say, again, you've got the sixty-five applications as addressed in the case a couple of weeks ago, and you're trying to rank it to fifteen open positions. Person who's applicant sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, they may have just fell outside that ranking by one point, two points or three points. And so from their position, they're analyzing all of the application data. They're trying to figure out and suggest that you misappropriated or applied certain data. And so those one or two points are what causes another basis for litigation. So the the sort of idea about taking available spots and providing a lottery is you avoid potential claims or allegations. And I'm not saying that it can't be done, but you you just avoid and simplify the process for people concerned about preferences, for people concerned about equal protection, for people concerned about your process, your administrative processing committees, et cetera. The lottery system for even in the marijuana context has shown and sort of demonstrated for municipalities, particularly at least under the original sort of caregiver situation, some sort of simplification that has avoided some concerns related to risk of lawsuits. So I think that's why when it was vetted and it was determined that if there are open seats, open sort of permits, taking all the application material, if they're deemed complete, and then deciding which ones get to select to have the permit ability, it just limits and reduces that risk. There are certainly municipalities that use criteria and standards. And again, you can see that not only in short term rentals, but you can see that in Class C liquor licenses, which are quota licenses. You can see that also in marijuana licenses. And of course, you know, there can be litigation related to that. So.
Okay, Chris, thank you. I appreciate it. Scott, I know you have your hand raised if you wanted to jump in here. And Eve, Eva, I just want to let you know, you're not allowed to speak until the public comment in just a few minutes. So I just wanted to let you know. Go ahead, Scott.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to go back to the original part of this discussion, I I do agree with council member Anderson's comment to to maximize the amount of of public participation. If the number was to go up or or go down, I think that's that's prudent, given the interest in this topic. And regarding the inheritance piece, I would still have to think about that. It's it's an interesting idea. I don't know if there's a role for an entity such as our ZBA or not, but I'm I'll I'll continue to think think that one over, but appreciate the deliberations.
Yeah, similar to council member Dean, I I think it's worth, I mean, I'm happy to give more thought to the inheritance. My concern is there are a number of people who own multiple STRs. And so how do we, I mean, it's one thing for somebody whose family's been in the house, the family home has been in the house for generations. How do we, I mean, it's one thing for somebody whose family's been in the house, the family home has been in the house for generations. I I totally understand that argument. Um, I'm not saying that I'm I'm ready to say, yes, their license should transfer. But what I feel strongly about should not transfer is people who, you know, as part of their investment portfolio have bought a lot of short term rental, more than one short term rental. Um, and it's not a family home, it's a short term rental. I don't think that whoever inherits that asset should be able to. Can, you know, to get that license, um, because we'll never address the issue of density if we do that. Um. And I do think the the lottery, I I my guess, and this might be my cynical self, is that if we do it on a first come, first served basis, we would have. You know, that list would be full within, you know, a nanosecond of us passing. And that it would not only block people coming into the community, it would block other residents who, you know, would want a shot at that spot.
Discriminatory.
Yeah, I just, I just think it would be unfair to even residents who might later decide they want a short term rent.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ju- just a closing comment. I would say after attending the planning commission meeting, having talked with a number of people in the community. I wish the council had taken the action that I had been threatened of having a uh a referendum put on the ballot because I really don't think this community as a majority supports short term rental caps. I really don't. Uh, it was reported in the paper. I was at the meeting. There was twenty odd people that spoke in opposition to the caps, not one except for some planning commission members that supported it. So I I, you know, back to the public participation and, you know, the majority rules, I I just don't think the community supports it as a whole. And I I'd love to see, I'd see that put to a vote. I'm sorry, I wouldn't pick that up.
I unders-
I have to agree too. And uh, to what Russ said, um, uh, I have to believe that mo- uh, most of the majority and and I've seen that from the folks coming to all of our meetings. I know I've counted over and over again. In fact, the last planning committee meeting, it was everyone. There was one person that spoke out. And she had spoken out previously uh in support of the caps, but she never did bring that up, uh Jane Underwood. Uh, but at the last planning commission meeting, every single person that spoke up, had to have been about twenty or so. Um, were against the caps. Um, so and and that's where I'm coming from, from what I'm hearing from my constituents. And I know, um, you know, we were outnumbered in that vote, Russ and I. Um, and uh, but uh, but I have to say, that's who I'm speaking for. I'm speaking for the folks that voted for me. I'm speaking for the folks that I talked to. Not just in town, but outside of the city limits as well. And um, and I just felt that way that I think it should have been a referendum. In fact, uh, I brought that up. I know it it had been talked about by uh residents that had chimed in that said, you know, if this doesn't happen. Well, you know, we'll put it up for a vote. And I thought, well, I think that would be a great idea. Because maybe we would all, all sitting at this desk would have a better sense on where the entire community was. Rather than just a small survey that was handed out at the beginning of the short term rentals. So.
If I may, um. It already has gone to, but we are a representative form of government and we are here to represent our constituents. That's, we've been elected to represent our constituents. It's our job to take on hard tasks, to do the hard things. This has been a really difficult, um, really meaty subject. I ran on it two years ago and it's, I'm still running on it now, holiday ran on it. I feel certain that um we'll find out from the voters come November, if they don't like the fact that caps are going in, that we're going to hear from that at the ballot box. And I think that then that makes sense, okay? Um, we can't just punt every difficult topic to, you know, uh, show hands by the villagers at Coughlin Park. We've been elected to take on hard topics. That's what we're doing. As far as people showing up, look, many kind decent people don't want to show up and and yell at you. You're going to hear from people whose pocketbooks they perceived are invested, you know. The investors, the real estate agents, those are the people that we're hearing from over and over and over again. So to count those, and by the way, most of them are from the township, to count those as part of your. Uh, list, I think is just a really flawed approach, just not a really good data driven. So um, we are elected. By our constituents, we report to our constituents, we're here to take on hard topics. That's what we're doing. And if for whatever reason they believe that they that we got it wrong. Absolutely, you can vote me out in November. That's where I'm at with that.
I've been not going that far with it. And and of course, not every uh decision we should send out to the voters. This one decision in particular, I thought was important enough.
So I just touch for up and down the lake shore. This has been litigated up and down the lake shore. Twenty percent cap on R1 low residential districts is really the lightest touch that, go research it, go look at. New Buffalo has a total ban on residential, okay? Charlevois has a four percent cap on everything up and down the lake shore. This is the lightest touch that you are going to find on anyone who's had the the nerve to take on this topic. I'll leave it at that.
And I I'll just, I'll just say if.
Come back just real quick. Um, I appreciate your thoughts with all of that. Um, but um, but we are not, we are Sagatuck, we're not Charlevoi. And um, so you know, comparing us with those things, it just doesn't count.
Fair enough. So the only thing I want to say is I do get text messages, emails from a number of constituents and neighbors and people who used to live in town and can't afford to live in town anymore. I've gotten dozens and dozens and dozens of emails and text messages from a more silent majority, if you ask me and what I've learned. Um, and and it's going to be fifty fifty. I mean, there's a lot of people that probably have. Um, and and it's a difficult decision, but we've been studying it for two years. Um, we just today, we were with Representative Joey Andrews and he was talking about, wow, twenty percent cap in the residential area. That's. Wow, a lot of areas are way stricter than we are as far as what's happening. Um, many communities are doing a complete. Um, not allowing short term rentals in their residential zones. We know what Sagatuck looks like, so it's not something we. I thought we could do. Twenty percent cap seemed generous and that's what, you know, a lot of other people that have been studying it throughout the state. Um, we had people in today from Ann Arbor and they're dealing with it in Ann Arbor. And I mean, communities everywhere are dealing with this across the world and across the country. And this is our approach right now. Um, and it's the first time that we're really taking it on. So.
And and further, a lot of, a lot of communities are canceling licenses, Gregory. We are.
It's okay, it's okay.
A lot of communities, though, are actually canceling, like, we are, we've worked hard to grandfather them in, we've worked hard with the ADUs. Or, you know, we we've really, this whole time, we've really worked hard to accommodate um things that make sense, okay? City Barcelona is going to cancel ten thousand short term rental licenses, not even, no grandfather, no nothing, canceled, it's over. I don't care if you bought it as an investment, I don't care how you inherited it, whatever, it's done. So this goes on all the time. That's all I want to say, that there's a lot of, a lot of things that we've done, we've taken a very generous conservative approach. Um, and I I just, I really stand behind this and we've been working at this for a solid two years. It's just time.
I understand we've been working on this for a solid long time.
If I, uh, go ahead, Russ, you had your hand raised.
Just in comment, um. To this continued discussion regarding, I'm elected to represent the constituents, I'm elected to represent the constituents. As well as the entire community. When someone votes for me, they vote for me to represent them, but also the business owners and non residents. So. We just, that's what I always have to remember is I'm not just speaking to the voters. I am speaking to them, I'm speaking to the entire community, including those that make money here and those that visit here. Um, it's a false equivalency to compare us to Barcelona, Spain, or to Charlevoi, or to New New Buffalo, or any other community. We're unique. We're different in many ways, but we're also similar in many ways, which I think is what we're trying, which I think what some people are trying to say. But again, it's a false equivalency to say. These other communities are doing even more than we're doing is not applicable in my opinion. And two is the fact that the city has taken, this council has taken action. We put in some pretty strong regulations back in the spring. We increased our fees for short term rentals. And that process is still getting its underway. So the short term rental caps, as I've said previously, to me is is a little premature at this point. Let's let this other process make its way through. I know there's other, there's enough council members here that will disagree with that. Uh, I'm clearly in the minority on this, but I still feel very strongly that this is a process and has a long term economic impact on this community that I don't personally understand. And can explain to people what it's going to do to the community over the course of time.
Holly, did you have something? Okay.
Real quick, and and just to say that, you know, I think I feel that I'm elected to serve on a lot of different subjects. I don't think this is a do or die subject, like, don't vote for me if you don't like this one policy. Um, I think that we were here to to serve on a lot of different things, not just on short term rentals.
Of course. Uh, go ahead, Ryan.
Yes, Mayor, just for some clarifications for Monday. I hear that the the council's comments as it relates to the the transfer language defined in the short term rental licensing ordinance. I I hear there's some council members that want to give that some more thought, some that they feel like we definitely need to look at it. So um, now that's something that, you know. That that's already in place through the the licensing ordinance. We can work on updating that and making changes at any time that the council so desires. Um, that's not something that we would necessarily have prepared or changed or anything like that for you on Monday. Um, I'm not hearing, uh, I've heard some discussion related to the lottery, but I'm not hearing like a, you know, clear direction to, to, you know, to to make any changes at this point. I have heard at least a few different comments related to uh striking the the provisions, um, or the provision related to amendment of maximum limit by resolution and. Um, and 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 not having that in the ultimate final version of probably either your police powers ordinance or your zoning tax amendment, is that. The, at least the consensus, uh, or at least the majority uh request that that language not be included in a version that you would be voting on Monday.
That's my opinion.
Mine too.
I, I'm here, sorry.
Go ahead, Scott, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, no, I I agree. I'm I'm prepared to vote uh on this on Monday.
As is.
But with the ord- with it being an ordinance and at a resolution.
Correct, correct. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Anderson's point that, given the public interest in this topic, that. You know, for the percentage to go up or to go down, uh, it should go through a fulsome, robust process that involves public uh participation.
Okay.
Okay, so I think the version we'll have before you on on Monday for your regular meeting to consider a vote on will will not have that amendment of maximum limit by resolution language.
All right. Uh, anything else at this point? Okay. Uh, Ryan, anything else you need from us or any clarity?
Nope, not on this.
Okay, all right. We will move on to public comment on anything you wish to speak on this afternoon. Uh, feel free to go to the podium, state your name and where you live. All right, if no one is in the audience wishes to speak, I do see Eva again. Go ahead, Eva.
Sorry about having my hand up before. Um, I think it was accidental as I was moving my monitor. Um, several of you have shared that this has been researched for the last two years. And my question is. Um, where is the information that came from all that research, such as uh what the risks and the benefits are to STRs um in Sagatuck specifically? Um, and how can the public access that? Because um recently, um. I believe Scott uh Dean shared how he believes that it should go to public participation, which I concur with. Um, but I also think it's important to educate the public and to give them as much of a holistic view as they can possibly receive. And without the information that. Um. Has been researched and you guys have learned through this research, not presenting it holistically to the public. I think that's a disservice for people to make an informed decision as to how it may impact them individually and collectively. Um, also because this is the first time I participate in this, um, and uh, I I should have participated many other times. Um, so thank you for allowing me to be here. I just have a general question because. I'm a little confused as to when questions and comments are made from the public, if or how they will be answered. Um, like, for example, as far as the AT&T Tower. Um, I'm concerned about the environmental impact and how that's going to be addressed and delineated and protections made. Um, and responsibility taken if there is uh an environmental impact. Um, and then another board rep shared um about, you know, the potential for other carriers. And obviously Sagatuck is a wonderful and unique community. Part of the reason my parents got this home is I may move there and they do hold it under an LLC. Um, and there is only one. Uh, we almost moved there during COVID and we almost moved there recently in the last year. So I do have an interest in that inheritance kind of being addressed. But um, like, how can we get this information as the public and how can our questions be answered if they're not answered directly by you when they are posed in these meetings?
Okay, um, we'll, we'll keep going on, but uh, Ryan, do you want to just address that?
Yeah, just, you know, in general, if if folks have a particular question, I I encourage you to to reach out to the, you know, appropriate staff member. Uh, you know, we're here for the 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 day to day and and answer uh some of these process related questions or if folks have ideas or things that we should consider. Um, so if you go to our city website, all of our staff uh emails are on there, you know, might might reach out to me as the city manager. If if I don't have an answer or if it's better for another department, I'll, I can defer it on to one of our our team members to help out. So. But if there are specific questions about anything that was discussed today, please reach out. I'd be happy to talk with folks, so.
Okay, uh, anyone else with their hand raised? Uh, Severin?
Uh, hi, Severin Noiki, eight four one Holland Street. I apologize, I was a little bit late, I was still at work, I'm still at the store. So I didn't really hear the whole explanation uh with um Mr. White issue and why he has to recuse himself from the vote. And I wonder if there's a chance that the the lawyer um may again try to explain. Why it's not okay for Mr. Uh, White to take a part in the vote. And yet two other members of the council have um. Currently licenses for for Airbnbs and they are yet allowed to vote from which one of them live in the in the district that. Hers or her property will not be affected by that cap, which kinda may indicate that her property may go up in value. So I do feel like there is the same issue with Mr. White as with other two council members. And I wonder why there is this distinction. That wasn't really clear to me. But again, I missed part of it, so I apologize. So if we can spend a little bit more time on this. Try to explain a very single, simple wording, why they are okay to vote and yet. Mr. White, even his license was approved already, he's not able to vote. Um, so, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with their hand raised? Oh, go ahead, in in person, go ahead.
Name's Gary Kemp, ten twenty-two Holland Street. Um, I've listened to most of these meetings, I've been to a lot of them. Um, I s- I wanted to say that I still think caps are wrong. I think. That uh the market will be taking care of itself as you're, as you're soon going to see. I think you're driving economic investment to Sagatuck, uh, to Douglas, to Sagatuck Township, to Lake Town Township. You're going to pay the price, we're going to pay the price for that here. You're also going to pay the price for losing businesses. And I think you're going to see that sooner than you than you think. Um, and I don't, I don't really like to see that happen, but I I'm afraid it's going to happen. Uh, secondly, lotteries, from my perspective, and I'll say it again, lotteries are unfair to everybody. I don't care how you cut it, they're unfair to anybody. You're also, as I read the zoning ordinances, you're putting. You're putting anybody that wants to apply for a a new license, they go through the whole process basically before they're uh. They're considered in the lottery. So the fire inspector is going to be going out and all of the inspections and basically. What I read is that that's going to be done before uh the lottery even takes place. Uh, I don't think a lottery is really the way to do it and I I just. Think it's very unfair. Thirdly, as far as transferring ownerships, I'm one of the people that I made as a comment at the last meeting of the uh Planning Commission. That um, my daughter's not going to be able to inherit my cottage if she can't rent it. And she really wants it. She loves the cottage. She would like to live there someday. And I don't, I think that's wrong, that you're not taking that into account. And I think, I hope you figure out a way to do that so that that doesn't. Have have to happen to people that have lived here. I've lived here twenty-five years and own the property twenty-five years and that's. And there are other people that have owned them longer than that. So I hope you figure that out. Uh, let's see if I have anything else here. Now, those are the, those are the main points I'd like to make.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Uh, Jacob, I see your hand raised. If you could introduce yourself, uh, first and last name and where you live. And unmute yourself. Okay. Uh, Jacob, we're trying to, um, if you're there, uh, we are recognizing you to speak. There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry, I got dropped from that. Um, Jacob from Sa- the city of Saga- Sagatuck. Um, I haven't participated.
Your last name, Jacob? Jacob, what's your last name?
B A R N E S. Um, I haven't participated.
Our clerk is asking for your address. Name and address.
574 Campbell Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I haven't participated in these, um, sessions to date, similar to a previous person. But I wanted to just kind of add, um, my support for, against this initiative, um, and add it to the list. I think one of the previous council members talked about. Many people showing up and voicing their, um, you know, support against this, um, resolution. I don't think that there's been many arguments stated, um, in the previous meetings that I've. Read the notes on or even today that really make any sense. Today's comments seem really focused on, we've been doing at this for two years, so let's just push this through because that's. Because it's been so long. Um, we've stated a lot of cities that are. Uncomparable to Sagatuck at all, um, and why they, everyone else is doing it, so therefore we should be doing it. Um, I think bringing up a, one of the largest cities in Europe makes absolutely no sense and is not comparable to our city at all. I think that a lot more work needs to be done to really figure out the economic impact of this. To date, it seems a lot of focus has been on what are others doing? What would it, it look like for us? How would the residential zoning and all of that work? And not, how is it going to impact our businesses? And I strongly agree with the previous person that we're just pushing businesses to leave the city and move right across the street. Right across the highway to the other cities as well. So, um, I just wanted to add my support for, against this. And I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done, even though it's been two years in the making. And then my final comment is, I, I, I also agree, like, this isn't, we shouldn't be one, we shouldn't be. Trying to get people to vote for people based on one. Issue. Um, it should be about the communities that are served. So if we want to make this a one-issue election. Because of this one resolution, I guess we can, but I, I don't think that's what we should be supporting in this community. We should be supporting, um, you know, various things that need to happen, just like that's been on this agenda the whole time. Very big issues that are affecting our community.
Thank you, Jacob. All right, Carly, I see your hand raised. And if you can introduce your, yeah, first and last name and where you live.
Yes, Carly Forstaffel. I'm at 32, um, 39 Lorimar Lane. And my comment is also, um, supporting no cap. And my, I guess my, my point of view and what I'm thinking through after listening to these conversations too about affordability is. My husband and I are like the new generation of wanting to live in Sagatuck someday. We're like completely obsessed with the community and we're in Chicago right now. And I think a lot of folks too, you know, like Sagatuck is such a safe haven for them outside of, um, the city. And the way for us to move there someday is to use it as a short-term rental to be able to afford it right now. So that's just another lens and we would love to, we would love to pass it on in the family. Um, so just putting that out there. And then also, again, um, like some of the other folks said, I would, I would love to see the, the data behind how this would provide more good than bad. I just, I don't really see any hard facts and maybe I need to dig a little further to see those of, of why this would provide more benefit. Because it seems like more harm. And with the new generation too, one of my good friends just purchased a house there. So I would love to like. You know, have more young folks join the community and, you know, build the, the new generations there too. Thank you.
All right. Thanks Carly. Anyone else with their hand raised? Okay, I think we, uh, that ends public comment. Did we have any correspondence in this one? I did not see any, um, council comments. Uh, we can start with Logan.
Yeah. It's hard to sit in one of these seats. It's. We are subjected to a lot, honestly. I think we all know that. I just want to say that I think it's important to, no matter what. Happens essentially in, in public comment to maintain our behavior. It is, our behavior reflects on us as individuals, but it also reflects on us as a council. And laughing at someone when they come up to the council is when they're come, taking time out of their day. To come and voice themselves, I don't think is appropriate. And so I'd like to encourage us all to work on our emotional management.
Okay. Gregory?
Yeah, I'd like to second that too. Um. Also, you know, I, I watched the, uh, the planning commission meeting and I just wanted to say that. To hear that our community is unlivable. Because of a short-term rental incident that happens maybe once or twice a year is unfounded. Um, I believe that our community is very livable right now. I don't see it getting any worse or going downhill. And, uh, I, I've been living here for 25 years and, uh, and I've seen the fluxes go up and down with the people that come in and go. Um, but I'm very proud to live in our community. I live right around the corner, Wally's downtown Sagatuck here and, um. I, every once in a while you get a bachelor party or you get somebody that stays up a little bit late at night or maybe plays their music a little bit loud. But, uh, that's the, you know, that's the nature, like Steve Mansa, you know, that's the nature of living. In a, in a tourist town like this, um, uh, you know, you're, you're going to see some of that sometimes. And sometimes folks will move here maybe five, six, seven years and they just don't, you know, they don't realize that that's the. Kind of town that we have, um, that, that, uh, that we have here. Um, so, um, I, I was kind of stunned by that. And, um, and stunned by thinking that this town is going downhill in any way, shape or form. To become unlivable. So, um, again, I, you know, I go back to what Russ Gardner said, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? With all of this. And so I keep looking for those, 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 uh, those answers up. I think we have a great community, great people, uh, here. And, um, and, uh, great, uh, rental companies that are very responsible with upholding, uh, the laws that we have. And, um, and you can shake your head or whatever, you know, when I, when I'm talking. That happens a lot because I hear it not just from our constituents that watch the meetings. But I also see it when I come back on YouTube, a lot of shaking of the head if you don't agree. But I, um, but, uh, but, uh, but, uh, I'm very proud to serve here. And, and again, what, what, what Logan just said, we're, we're serving here, um, uh, our community as a whole. We're not serving or running on just one platform or one law or whatever, STR law or. So when I hear comments like, oh, well, if you don't like what I think about STR, where you can vote me out or vote me in. I think that's disrespectful, not just to, uh, ourselves, but I think it's disrespectful, that kind of language, um, to everyone else, uh, in our city as well.
Hey Helen?
If I may, yes. Um, first, I do agree with Gregory. I don't think there's anything a little about our community. I think Sagatuck is paradise and that's why I work so hard every day to protect it. I also agree with Mr. White. I, I, for some reason it struck me as ridiculously funny and sometimes you can't hold back laughter and that's just the way it is. And, uh. And, uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, and Gregory, I wasn't not shaking my head at you at all. So. Think what you want. You're entitled to that. But just so you know, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
All right, Russ.
Yeah, thank you. I would concur with council members White and, um, Muncie, thank you for speaking. Appreciate that. Do you have a question regarding the construction at Water and Francis? Uh, we've had two major sidewalks that have been blocked off for at least two months. I don't know what the status of the project is, but, um, is there any? Is there anything in our ordinance or expectations around how long a very busy sidewalk has been blocked off for a period of time? So just more of a question, uh, in terms of getting a timing on that, because that has been disruptive. And let me tell you about an experience we had this weekend at the, uh, block party, uh, really good event. Thank you, Logan, for organizing that with us for the street. It's a very interesting because there's next to us, there's the Butterfly Cottage, which has been a short-term rental for, I, I don't know how long. We know the owner. It's very interesting because I've had now two couples and one couple actually came and spoke, the wife spoke at the planning commission meeting on Thursday. And I had never met her and she came up and she says, you know, we stayed at the place next to your house. I said, oh, really? She says, yeah, you were very accommodating. You were very friendly. You made us feel like neighbors. And we bought a place in town. They've recently purchased a property in town. And they have the intention or at least expectation that can be able to rent it because they're living in the east side of the state. And like many have done before them, they want to be able to keep the property and be able to pay the taxes when they're not here in anticipation of being able to move here full-time. And then Saturday, when the block party, we had the street blocked like we do, um, a woman came up and she said, hey, can I get to my house? I said, where are you staying? And she said, we're staying in the yellow house next door. They said, let me walk you down, let you in. So we let her in. It's a couple from, uh, St. Louis. Introduced myself and I said, hey, there's a block party today. If you're here, you're a neighbor and you're welcome to join us. They sat out for, I think, three hours with their dog in lawn chairs with drink, whatever they were drinking. And they enjoyed the music and enjoyed meeting people. And they said, you know, the way that this community has treated us, we've never been here before. We've heard a lot of good things about it. We might want to come here permanently. So again, those are just two anecdotes that I've had recent experiences with, and there's countless others of why this community attracts people. It's not. It's, it's the geographic beauty, but more importantly, it's the way we make people feel when they come to town. I view it as my responsibility to make them feel welcome and short-term rentals are a part of my community.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to echo too. I don't think our town, I don't think anybody's making the town, the, the point that our town is unlivable. I do think though, that there is a point to people who live on the hill, who, and those of whom especially who are completely surrounded by short-term rentals. On the hill, we are now at 39% saturation of short-term rental licenses. And I think for many people on the hill, people I hear from. It has made that neighborhood unlivable. But I will say, and I think this is important, I hope everybody online is listening to this too. We aren't banning short-term rentals. I mean, we are, we are making a significant reduction on the hill. There are no caps for short-term rentals in our, our two districts, in our commercial districts. In fact, when you look at with the, the caps we are proposing, um, we will have nineteen percent more short-term rental permits. Than we had in 2022. So there's a lot of room to short-term rent here, to buy homes here to short-term rent. So. It's, I think every single one of us understands how important short-term rentals are to our community. It's just, it's how can we, especially on the hill, but our other residential neighborhoods, which are zoned as, you know, single-family. Houses, neighborhoods, um, we just, we want to honor our zoning ordinance and our master plan. So, um. Great discussion as always, and, um. That's it for me.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Logan and Russ, uh, for the inviting me to their block party. Uh, I really enjoyed going to Spear Street. It was, it was a very nice event. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all in person on Monday. But you, Holly just mentioned the hill and, um, I'll, I'll give you a report out my window. Uh, there's a new home being built across the street from me. Um, it used to be a, I think, I believe it was a one-bedroom cottage from old Singapore that. Was moved across the ice to, uh, to Sagatuck and, uh, the owner or the developer has actually moved that cabin, that little cottage again. And there's a, a multi-room, modern home being built across the street from me. It's very nice. Uh, and I'm looking out my window and, um, you know, there's my daughter playing with her friend who, who lives up here on the hill. And from time to time I see some tourists walk by. They admire our gardens. They like to see the kids. They like to see my dog. Um, so. You know, our small town charm is very much intact and, um, and there is a very good vibe up here on the hill. And, um, I, I think. We all need to take a breath and just realize what a wonderful town we live in. And, um, as, as much as, you know, it gets, there's pressure in the room. I could feel it today. And, and once again, bless you all for the hard work you do. I wish I could have been there. Um, you know, I think we need to take a breath and Sagatuck is going to be just fine. It, it is just fine. And I, I can, I can tell you, just looking out my window, um, what a wonderful place we live in. What a great community we have. It's got that small town charm. I don't see that going anywhere anytime soon. So thank you.
All right, Scott, thank you. Um, just my final comments. Uh, you know, it is a contentious issue. It, it's been something that, like I said, many communities are having these same discussions. It doesn't mean that we're not unique, uh, in that Sagatuck has their own set of, um, different ways in which people have lived here, whether they've had cottages. Whether they've rented it out before Airbnb was even a thing. But I, I will say, um, you know, we're just trying to tackle this the best that we can so we have balance in our community. One thing I do want to address that I haven't addressed yet, um, I've been in a two-year process of remodeling my home and having new drawings done for my house. I need new siding desperately. Uh, Pat Murphy and I have been working together for the last couple of years. I looked at another house just to make sure we were making the right decision to put all that investment into our house, to make sure I was doing the right thing. And it'll be in front of historic, because I'm in the historic district, you'll be seeing those plans come before you. I look forward to having a new porch and new windows and new siding. I'm not going anywhere. So I know there's a narrative out there that, um, my house is going to be worth more than other people's. Well, I sure hope it's worth more after I put a bunch of money into it and live here for the next, you know, 50 years. But the bottom line is I'm not going anywhere. So, um, the fact of the matter is that's just a, it's a moot point. So, uh, the other thing I do want to say is we had a wonderful press conference today. We got to highlight our stunning, stunning community, um, Representative Rachel Hood from Grand Rapids and State Representative, uh, Joey Andrews. Were here introducing a bill, um, to protect our critical dunes. Um, they have two bills. Feel free to go to their websites and look those up, but, um, they chose Oval Beach to introduce these bills. It was well-attended by press and, uh, we did a little tour through our area so people could see the critical dunes. And why people are working so hard to protect those. It was a wonderful event today and it really highlighted, um, this incredible community that we live in. So that being said, I would love a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.